Good evening, everyone. I am calling the November 21 City Council Meeting to order. And as a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Though staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. Council President Walsh is also attending virtually. So the first item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite you to join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a couple of items under Special Business this evening. I'm going to do a couple of proclamations, but very excited to see the large crowd that is with us tonight and grateful that our Human Services Commission members were able to join us earlier for a thank you. First proclamation this evening is ID 1177, the Small Business Saturday Proclamation. And I would like to call Julie Hartwig from the Issaquah Chamber and Lindsay Pinkston up. Hello, ladies. Thank you for joining us. So the Saturday after Thanksgiving every year is recognized as Small Business Saturday. And whereas the city of Issaquah celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our economy and community, and whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the United States, and these small businesses are responsible for 62% of the net new jobs created since 1995. And whereas most consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday and report that the day encourages them to want to shop small all year long, and whereas merchants and vendors that do business in the city of Issaquah bolster our community's vibrancy and support economic vitality, and whereas Vision Partners, the collaboration of economic development organizations, supports the success of small businesses throughout the year, now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do recognize November 26, 2022 to be Small Business Saturday in the city of Issaquah and invite the community to join me in shopping Issaquah Loyal by supporting small businesses and merchants. And we'll just do a picture. Thank you, Jen. Thank you very much, ladies. The second proclamation this evening is ID 1303, and it is the DECA Proclamation. And I would like to invite all these amazing DECA students from Issaquah High to join me. Rhea, Sonia, Hope, Brooke, Jeremiah, Ava, Jemima, Claire, and Ms. Fury. Would you all come up with me while I do the proclamation? Great. And we can just spread right along, too. We're a big group. This is going to be a great picture. Thank you all for coming. Whereas the Issaquah DECA Club prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management in its high school, and whereas the Issaquah DECA Club provides opportunities to learn and practice important life skills such as problem-solving, communication, collaboration, teamwork, and creativity, and whereas the DECA community is built and supported on the local state, local, state, and national levels where students can meet peers and create connections with people all over the country, and whereas the Issaquah DECA Club hosts fundraisers and community events to support local Issaquah organizations, and whereas the club promotes ethical leadership, whose definition is the set of standards for right and wrong conduct in business, and whereas the Issaquah DECA Club advocates and promotes the principles of ethics through club meetings and social outreach, the club develops young professionals whose business principles revolve around integrity, respect, fairness, and honesty. Now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim November 21 through 26 of 2022 to be Issaquah DECA Ethical Leadership Week in the city of Issaquah and urge all community members to join me in this observance. And I forgot who's speaking. There we go. Come on up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rhea Patel, and I'm the Director of Outreach for the Issaquah DECA Board this year. First off, I'd like to thank Mayor Polly for signing this proclamation for us tonight and all of you for giving us your time. I'd also like to thank Juliana, who helped coordinate and communicate this event for us tonight. DECA has opened up many doors for all of us. We've all had opportunities to help our community meet new people and explore future careers that we might want to take upon ourselves in the future. Ethical leadership is not only a critical aspect of business, but also in our daily lives. This is why we have made it our goal to spread our message to the rest of our community. We have each had our own journey as a part of this club and carry everything we learn here with us into the future. So thank you for supporting the Issaquah DECA Club and our ethical leadership campaign.
Can we get a picture? Our camera will hold us together. Okay. I did not read that thing. Did I not read? I didn't have everybody's grave. You wanted to raise your hand. My name is Deva. My name is Leo. Can you get a picture of us? Oh, I don't know. Yes. Yes, yes, yes. Oh, I have to do something. Yes. Charles. Thank you. Very inspirational. At this point in time, we're going to move into audience comments, and members of the public may address council at this time, in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. And if you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This can vary by device, but one option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you're in the room and you did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes.
For those making comments, please direct your comments to the whole City Council and not individuals. And while this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, unmute your microphone for virtual attendees or step up to the lectern that's in front of council. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently. And limit comments to five minutes. If you're attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes comments seriously, and we thank you for taking your time to address us. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Lonnie Fairman, who is attending virtually. Lonnie, at this time, I will make you a panelist. You should see the option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on. Lonnie, I see you've unmuted. You have the floor. Now it looks like you remuted. Hey, your mic is open. Go ahead. Lonnie, it looks like you might be having some audio issues, so we'll move to the next speaker, and I will attempt to reach you via chat. The next speaker is here in the room, Ken Konigsmark.
Good evening and happy early Thanksgiving to everybody and all of you as well. I'm here to address the rezone request of Our Savior Lutheran Church, and I'm speaking on behalf of the church, which is located at 745 Front Street South in Issaquah. Our church is happy to be here, including several in the audience from our church, along with the recommendations from city planning staff, the administration, and the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee that suggests approving the rezone for our property. The church's priority and focus is on creating a beneficial social impact project that will be good for the community, the city, those in need, and our church, a win-win for everybody. We hope there may still be a possibility with the food bank, who needs to do some financial studies to determine the feasibility of raising the funds needed. And we hope that will prove positive, and they may come back to us. But even without that, we wish to find other social impact partners who would combine forces with us to do something creative and good on what is a very strategic parcel in the center of the city. To help us define the optimal outcome, we welcome the council, the city, and any assistance that could be provided in identifying and developing partnerships and funding sources for such a project, so your connections and ideas are welcomed at any time. We also have the expert advice of our consultants from Meriwether Advisors, one of whom will speak tonight, who has a long track record of creating amazing win-win projects for churches and nonprofits around the Puget Sound area who have used their land and properties to do something very beneficial. As indicated by the administration's recommendation for approval, this rezone is justified for several reasons. First and most importantly, it meets all the city criteria in the Issaquah Code for justifying a rezone, as was confirmed by the city attorney and the planning staff. Number two, given the multifamily zoning and uses that surround this parcel on all sides except for Ingy Johnson Park, including MFH zoning on our second church-owned parcel, this parcel too should very logically be zoned multifamily high density. I think we would all agree that the worst future outcome that nobody would want to see on this parcel would be for it to ever be developed into single-family multimillion-dollar homes as an island of single-family homes surrounded by multifamily. Number three, MFH zoning enables greater opportunity and flexibility for us and our partners to create a dynamic social impact project that can be maximized at this strategic location in the center of the city. Number four, wise future planning requires that the city not only meet its growth targets, but also other key social needs within the city, human services needs, as outlined in the Human Services Strategic Plan. A livable, vibrant, compassionate, and successful community that needs these kinds of services that we hope to be able to provide on our parcel. A rezone combined with creative partnerships can help us achieve these goals. So as your planning staff and administration recommend, we too are convinced that this rezone request meets all the criteria, along with many logical and compelling reasons to support this. Your vote to approve this rezone will inspire opportunities to partner with you and others to create a project beneficial to the city, the community, and those needing assistance. Please vote yes on the rezone tonight. Thank you.
City Clerk, who's next on the list?
Mayor, we're going to check in with Lonnie again. It sounds like Lonnie may have resolved his or her audio issues. Lonnie, are you with us? Can you please unmute?
Hello.
We can hear you. Thank you. Proceed.
Fantastic. Thank you. It's a pleasure to meet you all, City Council members. I'm a resident here in Issaquah. I have a point of question, more or less, and I realize this is not a question-answer setting, but I feel, allow me, I'll just state my piece. We were given this flyer, I want to say, on Friday of this last week. I didn't get a big chance to delve too deeply into it. However, it does pose a bit of a hassle when it comes to the neighborhood located on Juniper and Holly. The turkey trot tends to block in the entirety of that neighborhood, allowing absolutely no one to leave unless it's at the behest of the turkey trotters, I guess you could say. My question was, since City Council was the ones to approve of this, and City Council also has the ability to put in stipulations upon whether or not they change the route, would City Council be willing to do so? I do believe it bears an undue burden on everyone in that neighborhood, since that neighborhood itself is entirely enclosed by the turkey trot route. There is no way for the residents to leave. For example, people still have to go to work that morning. It's Thanksgiving morning. People still have to get groceries last minute. If people are having family members come into their home, they cannot go through that route. If they are leaving to go visit family members, they cannot leave their home on that route. And it is to my understanding, after speaking with the people who are hosting the turkey trot, it is at their behest at whether or not people are allowed to travel through in and out of that location. So then it bears the question, does this not impact our constitutionality on whether or not we are able to access our private homes? For example, myself, I work overnight. I'm not allowed to come home immediately after work. I then have to wait for the behest of the turkey trot to allow me to come home. If there's an emergency, there's a lot of elderly residents in that neighborhood who cannot go, say, to park somewhere all the way down on the other end of Front Street or on the other end of Gilman, unless we're going to park at a business, in which case could we not get ticketed for parking at that business overnight? That's, I feel, an egregious overstep. Now, I'm not going to say that there shouldn't be a turkey trot. I feel like a turkey trot is a great thing. But I do feel like the oversight of blocking in specifically only one, only one neighborhood, is a bit much. Having the route moved is something that can still be done between now and Thanksgiving Day, and I do pose this question to the City Council on whether or not they will do something about this.
Thank you, Lonnie. This is Mayor Polly. Actually, the administration, Mayor's administration, approved the permit, and so I would like to make sure that if you and Tisha are able, or City Clerk are able to talk in the chat, that you provide information so that we can follow up with you.
I am happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Lonnie. Tisha, the next person to address the council this evening?
Yes, next, we have a few in-person attendees signed up next. Gary Hanson is the next one.
Thanks for the opportunity to comment. I am here to address the Our Savior Lutheran Church rezone efforts, and I'd like to report that we had a semi-annual meeting yesterday and presented ideas that we had for the ongoing efforts to have our property rezoned and to have it become a center of support for the greater community. And I am asking if you will, yes, approve the rezone. Everyone in the congregation, when we gave our plans for moving forward after not having an arrangement with the food bank, is enthusiastic about still continuing our efforts and still becoming a center for support for the community. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. City Clerk?
The next speaker is Mary Lynch.
My name is Mary Lynch, and I reside at 2690 Northwest Oak Crest Drive. I'm here tonight for two things. First, I want to say I would have loved to have attended with WebEx and Comcast. Because of Comcast in my neighborhood, it really does not facilitate WebEx and its broad bandwidth that's required for WebEx, and there's been any number of meetings I've not been able to log on to because of the Comcast in my neighborhood. So I'd ask you to maybe consider until Comcast improves their service that you look at other options. I have no trouble with Zoom, with FaceTime, which I don't like that that much, or with Microsoft Teams, but WebEx consistently has not worked a couple times on really important meetings that I wanted to attend with planning in the rezone. That being said, I also sent you a letter. I would ask that you read completely through my letter that I sent you today on my concerns with the lack of long-range planning and integration that the city is doing. Some of this rebuttal that I've gotten already isn't really reading and approaching what I'm asking for. With REVA, and when we learned about that project, we are assured that we would have not sidewalks, but a walking path on the south side to the trailhead. That didn't happen because of the rework that was happening twice by Anti-Aircraft Creek. So thank you. You did give us a bridge. I think it's more than what we need down there, but we have almost a motorized bridge over Anti-Aircraft Creek going in right now. For the third and fourth time, a number of those power poles have been relocated. Unfortunately, right now, they're currently powering in all the concrete for that bridge and the concrete approaches to that, right over where if the city had been long-range planning in front of Oak Crest and then further down, could have had the power lines underground if you look at that long term and say you want this to happen. So every time you approach a power pole, that you have a plan in coordination with King County, with Puget Sound Energy, to underground the service. So, you know, the project is on the board tonight. Yes, I applaud, but it's a very small portion of what's causing us problems along that road, and we have to suffer along there the consequences of up to 12 to 24 hours' road closures due to trees falling over power lines. Luckily, the last one, we weren't, most of us weren't without power for that 12 to 24 hours, but we didn't have access into the city. And now with these new projects that we have going on, what has been happening over the last five years, we're also then with these new projects, aren't going to have access into city or not reliable access into the city, and that's caused us a big problem. So if we're more proactive in planning ahead, minimizing, you know, the projects done in a piecemeal approach and looking more proactively and long-range, I think some of these could have been, number one, avoided. The pedestrian bridge could have been avoided. We might not have had a raised crosswalk, but we would have had a crosswalk at REVA, which we asked for. Because if you also look at the amount of roadway that has been torn up by these two new projects, the raised, that's tax dollars that's going down the drain. It's roadways that's less than a couple of years old that's being torn up again. Once the power lines, if we ever do get them underground, there's more roadway that may be only be five, 10 years old that we're digging up again, and those are our tax dollars at work. So I'm asking the city to be more proactive with all the departments looking together, more proactive in defining where your utilities need to go in the future, how they need to function, and plan for that. Set aside some reserves. So when you have a project, let's not relocate a telephone pole six times and still have it in the area that trees are going to fall down on it. That's crazy. Because who pays for it? Those of us that live in that neighborhood. At the very end, I also was talking about emergency access, and my concern with all these projects that have been happening along there, that East Side Fire and Rescue's time is taking longer and longer. And on Friday, when I was walking along there, like I say, had I not waved and the car at front not seen me and maybe had the window rolled down, it would have taken that fire truck a long time to get through that bottleneck to get to wherever it was going. And so we need to minimize the amount of road closures on our major ulteriors, not only for the convenience of the neighborhood and the amount of time we have to pay, but for the safety of our neighborhood. East Side Fire and Rescue uses Newport Way to access all the western area, and if they have to go out and about on I-90, that's bad. So please, work together, plan ahead, and set aside some funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else, City Clerk?
Yes, Doug Barrett.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council members, for the opportunity to be here tonight and for the chance to offer my support of the Our Savior Lutheran Church proposed ordinance. My name is Doug Barrett. I've lived in Issaquah for over 25 years, actually as a neighbor of Zach Hall's and his family, and raised three kids in the South Cove neighborhood, so I'm a proud Issaquah resident, to be sure, but I also am very proud to be working on behalf of Our Savior Lutheran Church. As Ken mentioned, I'm with Meriwether Advisors. We're a commercial real estate brokerage and advisory firm in Seattle, but works throughout central Puget Sound region. We specialize in working with nonprofits and churches to help them understand how they might use their real estate in different ways to better fund their mission and fund their community programs. And it's an unusual niche, to be sure, but it's so rewarding for us because we feel like we're making a great impact to our communities with the work that we're doing. Because the reality is faith-based communities and many nonprofits are under intense pressure right now. In the case of churches, unfortunately, they're losing congregation members, and they're facing rising costs, and it's a very difficult environment for these faith-based communities to be in. So we like working with faith-based communities and churches to help them reimagine what could be done with their real estate to help set them up for decades more of relevance in our community, and that's the role that I feel that we're playing with Our Savior Lutheran Church. We've worked on behalf of St. James Cathedral and Trinity Episcopal Church and University Temple United Methodist Church, University Christian Church, Seattle University, St. Mark's Cathedral, the Plymouth Congregational Church in downtown Seattle, and Maculate Conception Parish, St. Mary's, many, many others. And I'd like to talk just very briefly about a few of these projects. For the Frye Art Museum, we helped them sell some excess land that they had that has provided now multifamily rental units, but the Frye Art Museum took some of their proceeds and funded their arts program at the Frye Art Museum and took other parts of their proceeds to buy units in the new development for their artists and residents. This enables artists to live nearby in the Frye Art Museum community, and that's a very unusual circumstance, and something that's been very important to the Frye Art Museum. We represented St. James Cathedral in a ground lease transaction that's providing regular income to St. James Cathedral, and the land is being used for affordable senior housing rental units, something that is very hard to come by in Seattle. We represented University Christian Church, which sold a part of their land for over 100 units of affordable housing, and they sold a portion of other parts of their land to fund their own endowment, which they use to donate to community programs in and around their church community. We represented University Temple United Methodist Church to be able to construct a new sanctuary because their sanctuary was not seismically sound enough, and fund their endowment, which will enable them propel their mission for another 100 years in Seattle. We see the same potential here with Our Savior Lutheran Church to, as Ken said, create a true win-win, except I would say win-win-win. We think with the council's support of this ordinance, Our Savior Lutheran- We represented St. James Cathedral in a ground lease transaction that's providing regular income to St. James Cathedral. And the land is being used for affordable senior housing rental units, something that is very hard to come by in Seattle. We represented University Christian Church, which sold a part of their land for over 100 units of affordable housing. And they sold a portion of other parts of their land to fund their own endowment, which they use to donate to community programs in and around their church community. We represented University Temple United Methodist Church to be able to construct a new sanctuary, because their sanctuary was not seismically sound enough, and fund their endowment, which will enable them propel their mission for another 100 years in Seattle. We see the same potential here with Our Savior Lutheran Church to, as Ken said, create a true win-win, except I would say win-win-win. We think with the council's support of this ordinance, Our Savior Lutheran Church can benefit. So can the nonprofit or other use that they could invite onto their campus, and so can the Issaquah community. So there really is a potential for a true win-win-win, but we would ask for the council's support of the ordinance to enable that to happen. Thank you very much, council members and mayor.
Thank you, Doug.
City clerk? Rhea Patel is the next speaker.
Rhea's gone. Done. She already spoke.
So we'll move on to Josh Friedman.
My name is Josh Friedman, and I'm here as the attorney for Our Savior Lutheran Church. I think the church community has spoken more persuasively than I certainly ever could about the rezone and redesignation proposal that they've prepared and submitted and which you have before you for a decision tonight. So I just want to kind of tie up our record with a bow by thanking the city's staff team and the church's community for all the detailed attention that they've devoted to this somewhat complex process over the course of this year. Through that process, I think the church has thoroughly thought through and answered all questions that have been raised about this proposal. So in the, and I recently, you saw Doug speak about how these proposals really can and have, in communities throughout the region, enabled faith-based communities to continue to serve their own missions, to provide their property to also other community entities and community services, and better integrate and serve community needs that we all see before us. So in the spirit of the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday, I'm hoping the council will support this effort to provide greater capacity for public serving and community building work on this site. We'll be here and would be happy to answer any questions you may have in the course of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Our next speaker is a virtual attendee, David Toyer. David, I'm going to move you up to be a panelist now. You should have the option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on.
Good evening. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Awesome. I decided to actually do this meeting from home tonight, so I'm not going to turn on my camera because you'll see the crazy amount of laundry I'm trying to get done at the same time. So I apologize. I really appreciate your time this evening. I represent the Wildwood Proposal, or our firm represents the Wildwood Proposal for a rezone, which has been recommended to be denied, which I think is a really unfortunate situation. The sole reason for the recommendation of denial, when you go through the information that's in the packet as revised, is around general conformance with the zoning. And, you know, it's been brought up that there's issues with critical areas and other, you know, restrictions on this site, which is exactly the reason why we believe the rezone is necessary in order to be able to provide a good level of housing and some housing opportunities that are needed throughout the region. And I won't get into a lot of the facts and the figures that we put into several of our letters here recently to talk about the housing needs that we have in the region. But even the Lieutenant Governor's Office in cooperation with the legislature has pointed out that it is one of our top issues affecting economic development and really just the fabric of our communities is we need to address housing. That being said, this general conformance matter, I direct you to page 53 of the packet that's specific to this agenda item. And if you look at the two zones, the existing zone, the proposed zone, setbacks are the same, impervious surface limits are the same, both have no minimum lot width, and the only real difference is the building height and the density allowance. The significant difference, though, in development terms is that under the existing zoning, you're limited to more than four attached units. And so even with the ability to use your clustering ordinance, you can't work around the constraints on the site to make a very economically viable project that can be an opportunity to provide housing options that are not at the highest end of people's budgets. And with the proposed zoning, it gives the opportunity to look at some different housing styles that would be allowed, that would be able to create some density on this site, and work around the constraints that are present. At the end of the day, whether it develops under the current zone or the future zone, the development footprint's going to be the same. The protection of critical areas is going to be the same. Zoning does not affect the critical areas that are identified, or how they're rated, or what buffers get applied, or what standards we look at for making sure that we mitigate any impacts that could happen to buffers. And so I really think it's a lost opportunity here to have the city deny this rezone, especially when, you know, we're facing such a housing crisis that is only getting worse. Even with the market conditions being the way they are, it's certainly not helping buyers. It's not helping renters get into the marketplace and find opportunities to have housing that's affordable and housing that's supportive. And I would hope that the city council would reconsider the recommendations to deny this rezone and move it forward. It is an opportunity, and I say it very often in the communities that I work in on proposals like this. Once you've allowed something to develop, it's very difficult for many years to go back and change that decision. And when you allow something to develop at a very low density and not take advantage of creating the opportunities that we need, we lose out on, we could have created the housing we needed, but we didn't. And it's just unfortunate. So I've seen it throughout my career, working in housing as an advocate. You know, I've had people on my staff where it's tough to employ people that I have working on housing projects when they can't even often afford the housing that they're helping to support create. And I'm hoping that at some point throughout this region, in this situation and others, that we won't pass up opportunities to do wise rezones that are not inconsistent with their surroundings and allow for the efficient use of our land supply. Because honestly speaking, urban growth boundaries are not going to be expanded any time in the near future. We have the land support.
David, excuse me. This is the clerk. You've reached the end of the five-minute comment period.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. City clerk, is there anyone else signed up?
No.
Great. Well, thank you all for sharing your comments tonight. We heard about many speakers tonight speaking on the reasons that the council is considering this evening. We had someone call in and talk about route planning for the Turkey Trot. We heard from residents about the need for more coordinated long-range planning and some issues with cable providers. And I think that's about it. So thank you all for taking the time to address the council this evening. We really appreciate it. And as a reminder, if you have written comments, you can submit them at any time to the city council@issquahwa.gov. Council President Walsh, who is joining us virtually, I just wanted to give her an opportunity to share any email comments that the council may have received on any of tonight's agenda topics.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just highlight, and I'm sure the council has received, you know, all of these, but throughout the feedback process, the council has received dozens of emails regarding the various comprehensive plan rezone requests that are on tonight's agenda, and we have read all of them and appreciated hearing from some of them tonight. I won't summarize how many there were in each area, but they all shared great stories about what each of these properties mean to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Next item of business on this evening's agenda is committee and regional reports, and I'll start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Mobility and Infrastructure Meeting, which was scheduled for December 13th, is canceled. The Cascade Water Alliance Board met on the 16th of November, and there were no significant decisions impacting Issaquah that were made during that meeting. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. On November the 16th, I attended the Regional Transit Committee, and during that meeting, the RTC unanimously approved the Metro Transit 2022 System Evaluation, which now moves to the King County Council for approval. The December RTC meeting has been canceled. And then on November the 18th, I zoomed into the East Side Transportation Partnership meeting from Kansas City, where I was attending the National League of Cities Convention, and that was once again demonstrating the value of remote connections. ETP members received a presentation from Metro regarding its new strategic plan dashboard and its rider dashboard. I have sent those links to both dashboards to the council and would gladly share those links with anyone else who is interested. Following the Metro presentation, ETP members reviewed and approved a draft ETP Legislative Priorities document that also has been distributed to council members for review and comments. I'd just like to ask my fellow councilmembers to please note that the document was completely rewritten in light of the Move Ahead Washington legislation that passed in 2022. Also, the ETP members worked to produce a more general platform for future requests, since the consensus of the group is that the legislature, having passed such a historic piece of legislation, will not be as focused on transportation this year. So we're preparing with the current, the draft, to create a sort of framework for future advocacy. There is a general sense of the body that we should focus on the timing and sequencing of projects already approved in the Move Ahead Washington package, very similar to the statement that was in our own legislative agenda. So I would ask you to review and prepare comments, and I will accept council's comments on the ETP Legislative Priorities at the December 5th meeting under good of the order. And then the next ETP meeting is December the 9th. So we'll do a final approval at the December 9th meeting. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Salmon Recovery Council of Wyra 8 met on November 17th, and Wyra 8 is the technical name for our watershed. The major agenda items included approval of funding recommendations for the Small Grant Program of Wyra 8, and a presentation about the upcoming 2023 Wyra 8 grant rounds, and then approval of the 2023 Cooperative Watershed Management Program Funding Guidance. And this year, we were considering, among other criteria, diversity, equity, and inclusion criteria, so that was great to hear how grants were looked at through that lens. We also had an informational presentation about watershed, the watershed salmon returns and the monitoring that's ongoing, and an update on King County's recently completed restoration project at the Little Bit site on Bear Creek. There's an upcoming meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council, January 19th, 2023, so that was our last meeting of 2022. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. Very briefly tonight, the King County Growth Management Planning Council is scheduled to meet on November 30th, and the agenda has not been set.
Thank you. Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board met on Thursday, November 3rd, from 10 till noon. No action occurred at that meeting. Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met virtually online November 9th from 7 till 9 p.m. And we did take up for potential feature action a 2023 SCA Legislative Priorities Draft, which I forwarded to all of you and will be asking for feedback at tonight's good of the order in preparation for my commenting at the next PEC meeting, presenting feedback from our council. The Council Services Safety and Parks Committee met on Tuesday, November 15th at 6:30 p.m. here in chambers. We had two items on the agenda. ID 1298 TOD Project Tibbetts Valley Park Cell Tower Lease. This was a presentation on a potential relocation of a cell tower that is on the property that would be potentially redone for the TOD project, and we voted 3 to 0 to continue to negotiate with Vertical Bridge on the lease for a telecommunications tower to support the TODOC project. And then the second bill was related, ID 1297, King County Housing Authority Interlocal Agreement. This would be an agreement that basically, as part of this effort, would basically enshrine that the use of that property would be by King County Housing Authority. It set certain terms around the fraction that would be market rate housing and the fraction that would be subsidized housing, as well as certain other terms, and we voted 3 to 0 to advance the ILA for full council consideration, which I believe will be occurring at the next city council meeting. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Council President Hall.
No report from me this evening.
Thank you. Council President Walsh.
Thank you. Just a brief report. The next meeting of the King County Affordable Housing Committee will be Friday, December 2nd. The agenda is not yet released, but I believe we will be discussing potential amendments to the King County countywide planning policies to present those to the other board for approval. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President. Next item on the agenda this evening is the mayor's report. There will be no executive session, there is no executive session scheduled for this evening. As part of tonight's consent calendar, city council is anticipated to vote on AB 8490. This is an authorization for the mayor to enter and execute an interagency agreement with Washington State Parks and Recreation Commission. This interlocal agreement allows the city to continue to explore the conversion of state park land and the sighting of a fire station near the boat launch at Lake Mammoth State Park. This agreement would permit the city to reimburse state parks for exploratory work into the feasibility of the sighting, including appraisals and a cultural resource review. This interlocal does not commit the city to exchanging any city land for the state park property. The city council will have the ability to make that decision at a future date if the current work indicates that the exchange is feasible. Earlier tonight, we had a fabulous reception for our Human Services Commission, for the council to be able to meet, greet, and thank them for the incredible work that they completed earlier this year on the human services grant recommendations. The city council adopted the recommendations made by the commission as part of the city's biannual budget on November 7th. And in tonight's council agenda, there is the Human Services Quarterly Report. This informational update includes a summary of the activities conducted by the Human Services Division from July 1st to September 30th, 2022. In particular, I encourage councilmembers to review the incredible work that our Human Services Commission performed to provide human services grant recommendations, and thank you again to the commissioners for their outstanding work. There are a few upcoming events that I thought I would give you notice of. Coffee with the mayor, which we were doing before COVID, is back. I will be available for community dialogue on November 22nd from 3:30 to 5 at 55 Sunset Coffee, and I look forward to engaging with the community. The Turkey Trot, the Issaquah Turkey Trot, is a casual run walker trot on Thanksgiving morning through downtown Issaquah. All ages are welcome to participate, and costumes are encouraged. All proceeds from the event benefit the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank, and registration and more information can be found at issaquatherkitrot.org. State Park Free Pass Day. Enjoy a day-free access to the Washington State Parks, Washington Fish and Wildlife Lands, and the Department of Natural Resource Lands on November 25th for Native American Heritage Day. And the historically hip artisan market is open. Find local holiday gifts at the artisan market November 26th to 27th, from 12 to 5 at the Issaquah Train Depot Museum. And just a final note, that the city hall will be closed November 24th and 25th due to the Thanksgiving holiday. And that concludes the mayor's report. The next item on the agenda this evening is the consent calendar, which was distributed to council in advance. And if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together with one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And city clerk, you have an announcement for us?
Yes, I would like to state that the attachment, the minutes for item E on the consent calendar- on the consent calendar, the minutes of the October 3rd regular meeting, were inadvertently left off of the agenda packet, and so, we'll just move that consent calendar item to the December 5th council consent calendar. So, approval of the consent calendar tonight, we'll be omitting that item.
Thank you, city clerk. Does any councilmember desire to remove any item, except the minutes, which aren't there, from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Seeing none, if, is there a motion? Yeah, let's do it from here.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented in tonight's agenda packet.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as presented. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes 7 to 0. The next item of business this evening is regular business, AB 8387, the 2022 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. The ask before council this evening is to adopt the ordinances, and I'd like to invite, it says Kristen Leeson? Is it Kristen? Oh, there it is. Okay. I'd like to invite Senior Planner Kristen Leeson to present this item. Welcome, Kristen. Can't hear you yet.
I am.
Now, we got you.
You can see it?
Yep. We can see the presentation, and we can hear you.
Okay. I am Kristen Leeson, Senior Planner with the Community Planning and Development Department, and I'm here tonight to talk about the proposed 2022 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. If I can get this slide to change. There we go. So, tonight's purpose is to take action on the proposed amendments. Taking a step back, a little background, you may recall that in February of this year, city council approved a docket of proposed comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments, which this year only included three proposed rezones or requested rezones. And a reminder that the docket is required by the state, so that we look at all of the proposed amendments holistically rather than piecemeal. We will get into details of these proposed amendments in a few minutes. So, some of the things that we consider when we're doing rezones is that first, they meet the criteria. I'll get into that as well. Second is that we look at all uses, particularly highest and best uses on the property, because sometimes someone will come in and say, "We want to do this on this site," and maybe they submit a permit, but it doesn't always happen. And then, if it doesn't happen and the property's been rezoned, something else could happen there. So, you have to look at everything. And the last one is development standards comparison. What's allowed on the site now, as far as height, impervious setbacks, FAR, as opposed to what could possibly potentially go on that site? So, the criteria are located in our Land Use Code Title 18, 1804 Procedures, 632 rezones, and there are 10 of them. So, from a complete application to, is there a community benefit provided here? Zoning conformance, can you develop under the proposed zoning? The two that are highlighted in orange, we will be talking about tonight a little bit more, but the growth controls, this was written several years ago, but it's intended, you know, if, if the request is going to increase housing density on a site, and we have not met growth control, or the GMA, the Growth Management Act mandated housing targets, then it could be, that meets the criteria, it could be approved. The other one is change circumstances or regional development. This is number four. And something on or adjacent to the site has changed, and this needs to change in accordance with those changes, or maybe the zoning district is, it's appropriate for reasonable development on that site with the new rezone. There's no detriment to adjacent property, material detriment. It's consistent with or can be consistent with the comprehensive plan. It would be consistent with, any development would be consistent with city regulations. Any public services utilities are on site or could be provided on the site, and environmental impacts can be mitigated. And if for some reason they can't be mitigated, then those impacts are considered acceptable. Those are the criteria that we look at. The first one I'm going to talk about is the Newport area, and so, just sort of ignore what I just said. This is a, this is a unique situation. So, this parcel is .41 acres. It is currently zoned, the land use designation is community facilities. The proposed designation is multifamily residential. The existing zoning is community facilities recreation, and the proposed zoning is village residential. This is actually being proposed by the city as a correction to an oversight that was made in 2021. So, in, years ago, as part of the Anthology Development, Anthology was required to give the city land to be used as a park and trail on the site. So, what you see here in the blue was given to the city. Unbeknownst to us, a lot line adjustment happened in 2019, and taking this parcel with the orange dotted line out of this parcel 107 and putting it into this parcel 109, you can sort of see it outlined here, which means that technically, when this was rezoned last year, it wasn't actually, this little parcel wasn't actually rezoned, but it was because of the map. Anyway, it's a correction that needs to be made. You can see on this map from the aerial view, that's where it's located. Here's the entrance to Anthology. Here's the trail. And then, here, you can see, this actually contains the utility box for Anthology. It also serves as the stormwater vault for Anthology, and it's the entrance to the area. So, this, it won't be changing. It would, it would remain as, you know, when it's village residential, the same uses will remain. So, the recommendations, the administration, the Planning Policy Commission, and the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee all recommend approval of this rezone and redesignation. Next, I'm going to move on to Wildwood. Wildwood is a four acre site located on Wildwood Boulevard Southwest. It's in just south of Sunset Way in Newport. It is four acres. Its current designation is low density residential. The requested designation is multifamily residential. The existing zoning is single family small lots. Requested zoning is multifamily medium. You can see on here that to the west are single family small lot and single family suburban. To the south is multifamily medium. Open space is to the right, and more single family small lot is located on the east up north. And when you look at the aerial map, you can see there are no structures currently on the site. It is heavily treed, and when you look at the, oh, and there are single family houses. That's what's developed primarily around here. And when you look from the street level, there is, it's all treed. There is a path that runs adjacent to, a multipurpose trail that runs adjacent to the sites, not on the site. Additional uses that need to be considered would be triplex, fourplex, all the way up, you know, it's multifamily housing, assisted living, library. Right now, elementary schools and middle schools are allowed on the site, but this would allow high schools and colleges, personal grooming, and a small 4,000 foot grocery store. Standards, this actually doubles the density. It would take it from 7.26 dwelling units per acre to 14.52 dwelling units per acre. It also reduces the minimum lot size from 6,000 square feet to 2,500 square feet. The setbacks and impervious surface are about the same. The base building height would go from 30 feet to 40 feet, and with the potential of going to 50 feet under multifamily medium. There are several environmental constraints. So, everything you see in green right here is a steep slope. The brown is the steep slope buffer, which is 50 feet. In addition to that, there's another 15 foot setback that would be required. On the right, we have the water constraints. So, you have the Dam Access Creek, which is a Class 3, has a 50 foot setback, or a 50 foot buffer, excuse me, and again, with a 15 foot setback. And then, Issaquah Creek is a Class 1 and has 100 foot buffer with a 15 foot setback. And I should note that this is shown from the center line and not from the high watermark, and the high watermark would push it out a little bit. The Planning, Development, and Environmental Commission asked, Environment Commission asked if we could please show it from the high watermark, because it does change what it looks like, and we were told no. It requires a consultant, and it changes regularly. So, that's why it's usually marked at the time of development rather than as a, as a place in time now. It's a mark in time now. Our Shoreline Master Program also designates this part of Issaquah Creek as the Issaquah Creek Urban Conservancy Area, which puts on this a 200 foot buffer from, from the high watermark of the creek, which disallows or does not allow multifamily within 200 feet of the creek. So, if you look at this layer, when you overlay the steep slopes with the urban conservancy with the creek buffers, what you see in green is the remaining developable site approximately. So, the Wildwood recommendations, the administration does not approve this, because it would not meet criteria four, which means it wouldn't be appropriate for reasonable, reasonable development under the requested zoning. Planning Policy Commission also does not approve, and they base it on criteria number four as well, but they also cited criteria number three, which talks about the growth targets, and whether, stating that we have already met our growth targets. The Planning, Development, and Environment Committee has the same recommendation as the administration, that we do not approve this, or that you do not approve this, again citing criteria number four and reasonable development. Lastly, is our Savior Lutheran Church. This is about three and a half acres located on Front Street South. It is, that's existing land use designation is low density residential. They're requesting multifamily residential. The zoning is currently single family small lot, and they are requesting multifamily high. And looking here, you can see that to the east of the property and to the south of the property, it is a multifamily high. This parcel right here, it's a multifamily high, is actually owned by the church. This is developed, whoops, I apologize. This is developed as condominiums and apartments. This site down here is a nursing home. Or here, you have multifamily medium. These are condominiums, and then, an open space directly to the north. Looking at the aerial, you have the church. This is the other parcel that's owned by the church, and it has parking. There's a church. There's also a single family house back here. And here it is from the street view. Similar to the other one, additional uses that would need to be considered are much denser, multifamily, assisted living, museum or art gallery, again, a high school and garage, library, distribution warehouse, and shipping, grocery store and office, both about 4,000 square feet, personal grooming. And then, development standards, this more than triples the amount of allowable density on the site from 7.26 acres to 29, I'm sorry, from 7.26 dwelling units per acre to 29 dwelling units per acre. It also has no minimum lot size, whereas, single family small lot is 6,000 square feet. Again, the setbacks and the impervious, impervious surfaces are about the same as they would be existing. The base building height would go from 30 feet to 40 feet, with the potential to go to 65 feet. In order to go up and increase the height, there are conditions that must be met. One of those includes increasing the pervious surface by 10%, which would decrease the impervious surface that also would require setbacks of 25% once you hit the third floor of a building. And there are other things that are listed. Environmentally, the Issaquah Creek runs adjacent to the property. So, I'm going to start over here on the right, runs adjacent to the property. It's Issaquah Creek, again, is Class 1, and it has 100 foot buffer, plus a 15 foot setback, and this is from the center, from the center line. There are minimal steep slopes on this property that have a 50 foot buffer right here. This also is designated as Issaquah Creek Urban Conservancy under our Shoreline Master Program. It has a 200 foot buffer. Within the 200 feet, you cannot put multifamily. Within 100 feet, which would be this one over here, but about right there, you cannot put commercial. Those are not allowed uses there. So, the administration's recommendation is to approve the rezone. The planning policy recommends denying the rezone. They do recommend, however, that the applicant engage in discussions with council about a development agreement. Their basis for not approving this is our, is criteria number three, growth controls, stating that they believe that we have met our growth targets. And the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee recommends approval. Should these amendments be approved, they would become effective December 21st. Our recommendations, so there are three different recommendations. There are three different ordinances. You may combine these if you'd like, and take a vote on two at the same time, or three at the same time. But, the three recommendations. One is to adopt an ordinance amending comprehensive plan, land use designation map, and zoning map for the Newport area. The second is to adopt an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, land use designation map, and zoning map for our Savior Lutheran Church. And the last is to adopt an ordinance denying the changes to the comprehensive plan and land use designation, land use designation map and zoning map for Wildwood. And that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Kristen. I'm just going to check in with Rachel if you needed to address the council on the ordinances at all.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the record. Rachel Turpin, City Attorney. I just wanted to let you all know, I believe you've been advised in advance of this meeting, that there were some minor changes made to the ordinance, the proposed ordinance recommending denial of the Wildwood amendment. Earlier today, the packet was replaced, or the, the version in the packet was replaced. These were minor revisions that were made to better reflect the discussion that occurred at the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee a couple of weeks ago. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. And now, I'll turn it over to Committee Chair Hunt, if you'd like to provide a Planning, Development, and Environment Committee recommendation for this item.
Yes, thank you. So, the recommendation was covered in the presentation. Thank you, Kristen, for that. The Planning, Development, and Environment Committee met on November 1st to discuss this item, and we agreed with the staff recommendation at that time on all three of the items. The first one was, is the Newport area rezone, which is the request by the city, and we had very little discussion on this topic. We felt it was a technicality, and there was no reason not to approve it as such. And then, on the second two items, we had more discussion. We agreed with the staff on the Wildwood, on the staff's recommendation regarding the Wildwood rezone and redesignation. We did not think that this met criteria four, which is the one about that the rezone is warranted because of changed circumstances and the need for additional property in the proposed land use district, or because the proposed zoning district is appropriate for reasonable development of the property. We didn't believe that circumstances had, had changed. And we also had a discussion about the environmental constraints and the extensive areas around, or on this property that would not be developable because of environmental constraints, including also Shoreline Master Program and a number of other issues. So, on that one, we agreed with the staff's recommendation to deny the recommendation. We also had a discussion on this one, as well as on the our Savior Lutheran Church request about that neither of these requests for rezone were in central Issaquah, but they were adding density. So, they weren't in our urban growth planned area for the most growth. We did have a discussion about that. In our comp plan, it, it states that that's preferred. That is what we are preferring, but also, it's still a legislative decision. It's still up to our individual judgment on a case by case basis. And I'll look to the attorney if I've misstated anything, but it's up to us, basically, to determine each one and to factor in that it isn't in, within our regional growth center, or it isn't within central Issaquah, but we still have to take each, each rezone request into consideration on its own merit. And then, with our Savior Lutheran Church, we believe that that one did meet the criteria necessary for the rezone. We had a discussion about two of the criteria in particular. So, the criteria three was the criteria that the Planning Policy Commission recommended, was the one that they recommended against the rezone, because they felt that it didn't meet that criteria. Unfortunately, we, they, unfortunately, they did not have the legally defensible interpretation of that criteria, and it's a very complicated criteria. It refers to a growth target. They interpreted that as a, as a previous growth target, and then, when the committee asked our legal counsel about which growth target we should be looking at, we were told asked our legal counsel about which growth target we should be looking at, we were told that the more legally defensible growth target to be considering was the 2044 housing target, which we have not, which we have accepted as a city, but we have not yet met. And they were using an older growth target, and they also, in their discussion, were considering capacity for housing, just that we could meet our growth target without this zoning change, which is also not, not the legally defensible way to interpret the criteria. So unfortunately, they didn't have that guidance. We did. I think that's a key factor in why we ultimately went with a different recommendation than the Planning Policy Commission. We also had a discussion about their recommendation, which was to go into a, in a conversations about a development agreement, and that requires both parties to be willing, and in this case, both parties, both the city and the, and the applicant both preferred to, they both recommended and preferred to have the rezone rather than go this extra step with the current zoning. So we didn't think that that, we didn't think that that would be the way to go. And, and then basically, we agreed that it met all of the other criteria, and that when we were using the 2044 housing targets, the city had not yet met those, so that criteria was, was not something that, that was violated in this case. And Yeah, and so I think, I think ultimately, we came to the same conclusions as the staff. And I did just want to thank the Planning Policy Commission. I watched their meeting, and I thought, I think that served as a really good basis for our conversation. It teed up a lot of really good questions for our Planning, Development, and Environment Committee, and a lot of those questions are answered in our packet, and I think, so I think they were, they, their discussion was really important for getting us to this recommendation in the future. I think it would be really important that, especially when there are complicated criteria that require interpretation, that they have the same basis of understanding and that same legal counsel that we have, so then we're operating on the same playing field. And so that concludes our discussion, and if you have any questions for me about any of them, please let me know.
Thank you, Committee Chair. Are there any questions, either of staff or Committee Chair? Sure, Deputy Counsel President?
Thank you very much, Kristin, for the presentation. I was wondering, so there were a couple of slides that you showed, both for the our Savior Lutheran Church in the Wildwood requests around additional uses, and you have the different boxes of additional uses that we should consider. I was hoping you could walk me through how exactly we should use that slide as we're considering these requests. And let me know if you need further clarification on that.
Would you, would you like me to pull those slides back up?
If it's helpful for the rest of the council, sure. Why not?
Okay. Oh, there we go. So you wanted to see both, correct?
Yeah, I guess just more generally, how should we use them as we're thinking about this concept tonight, as we're thinking about the requests?
I hope I didn't, but I'm going to start with one parcel. What, what you see when you look at these is everything that is in this green and brown right here cannot be developed.
Oh, I'm, I'm really sorry. The, there were a couple of slides, let's see how far away that one is, that have all the different boxes of additional uses, like triplex, assisted living.
Uses.
Yeah, those. How should we be using this information in our decision-making?
When you look at these, you look at it and you, well, not when you, when we look at these, we look at them and we think, okay, so a triplex and a fourplex can go on this site, and there are this many environmental constraints, and it's located adjacent to these uses. Would these, would these be compatible uses? Are these reasonable uses on the site? So that's, that's what we're looking at. Does that help?
So can I, can I, so these are uses that would be allowed if we adopted the rezone and redesignation that are not currently allowed with the current zoning. So they could put a high school there in theory if we had put the rezone, but not currently, not if we deny the rezone.
Exactly. So right now, an elementary school and a middle school can go there. And that's one impact, but this would allow a high school and potentially a college on there, which is a different impact. So yes.
So is this the same way that we're thinking about the, considering highest and best use when it comes to reasonable development, then? Is, is that in the same space? Because I guess for, hmm, for...
You knew, we could, as we move through these, I'm hoping that Committee Chair wants to move them one by one, because I have a couple of council members who need to make comments, but you could probe with your other council members as well, how they are using that different information in their decision-making. Because I think, I think that will come out in your conversation on each one.
Well, that answered my question, so I appreciate that. Thanks.
So Committee Chair, is it, are you able to consider a motion?
Yes. Could you pull that up, that slide up, last slide? Yes.
I, I have it too. Okay. I move to adopt ordinance number
2996.
Amending the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation Map and Zoning Map for parcel number 2024069119, parentheses Newport area.
Second.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Hall, or Deputy Counsel President, I know you wanted to make some comments potentially on this one as well. Were you fine? You could do that if you want.
Yeah, thanks. Just real quickly, I just wanted to make a quick statement, kind of in the spirit of full transparency around this one, that I do live approximately 300 feet from this site, but I've been advised that this is a legislative matter and not a quasi-judicial matter, so the appearance of fairness doctrine doesn't apply. And that said, I have no, I just want to state that I have no personal interests in this decision, and that could potentially create a conflict of interest under either state law or the Issaquah Code of Ethics, and so I'm going to participate in the discussion and the vote tonight, as long as that's okay with everyone.
Thank you. So on this first ordinance, 2996, is there any council discussion? Keep an eye on the video attendees. So if there is no discussion, the motion is, motion before council is to adopt ordinance number 2996, amending the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation Map and Zoning Map for parcel 2024069119, the Newport area. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That carries unanimously, seven and oh. I'll go back to Committee Chair.
I move to adopt ordinance number
2997.
Amending the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation Map and Zoning Map for parcel 3424069217, parentheses our Savior Lutheran Church.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there council discussion? Councilmember DeMichele?
I am going to support this ordinance and the motion, and I just wanted to make a few comments. I did watch the Planning Policy Commission discussion, and I was very happy that I had done so. There are things that can't be captured by the official minutes, and it was a really good, healthy discussion that they had. And during the discussion, although they focused on criteria number three, there were also many expressions of, what can I say? Very many expressions of hope for the project itself. And one of the commissioners, Commissioner Lewis stated, if I were a council member, I would vote differently than I'm voting as a commissioner. And so it was a very nuanced discussion, and as Councilmember Hunt said, they did not, they were not privy to legal counsel as we have been, and thank you so much for the clarification. So that was one experience, and then I also wanted to commend the PDE Committee for the excellent discussion they had and the clarification that they had. To respond to your question about the different uses at the Policy Planning Commission, they did, they were very clear with the commissioners that if they approved this ordinance, that those are all the possible uses. And so you have to keep that in the back of your mind, that it could someday be used, and I think that's full transparency, that we understand that, yes, someday it could be, but we, we have some owners that are there right now who have plans for what they'd like to do. And I think those are reasonable plans, and also, as was stated earlier, plans that could be very beneficial to our community. I also wanted to say that the statements that were made about churches being very logical places right now because of the circumstances and the declining congregations for, and people willing and wanting to be consistent with their mission of helping people who are low-income or in need of housing or other assistance. So our Savior meets all of those criteria as well. So yes, I will be supporting this. I think, I'm very hopeful that this will turn into a really important asset to our community. Thank you.
Other discussion? And Council President, I just want to check in with you. Yep, go ahead, Council President.
Thank you. I will echo much of what I heard from Councilmember DeMichele. Having participated in the PDE Committee meeting and conversation there, and having watched the PPC, there's obviously a lot of thought around this, and there's a lot of community interest and community concern over this. I believe this is a parcel that meets the criteria that have been designated for this, and thus is an excellent opportunity for a rezone that has community benefits as well. So I will be supporting this amendment.
Thank you, Council President. Any other discussion? Sure. Deputy Counsel President?
Just real quickly, I'm also going to be supporting the motion tonight. I'm thrilled and love to see all this positive energy around the social impact change that they're talking about, but I also appreciate how that kind of lives outside of this decision that we're having tonight. It's very methodical, it's very analytical, it meets all the criteria, and so we should be compelled to vote yes. So that's what I'll be doing. Thanks.
Thank you. So seeing no other council members choosing to discuss, it has been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 2997, amending the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation Map and Zoning Map for parcel 3424069217, our Savior Lutheran Church. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That carries seven and oh. Committee Chair?
I move to adopt ordinance number
2998.
Denying changes to the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation Map and Zoning Map for parcel 3324069121, parentheses Wildwood.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Joe, I think you have some comments on this one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want the council to be aware that the party proponent is a member of the master builders of Kingston, Homish County, and that's the group that I work for. While this may not rise to the level of an actual conflict, there probably is an appearance fairness problem with this, so I'm going to recuse myself from the discussion and vote on this particular topic, and I'm going to be leaving the room at this point.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Joe. Council discussion? Who would like to start? Council President?
Thank you. I am actually going to be voting nay on this item. This is a difficult one for me, because in the PDE meeting, we had discussions over whether there was suitable land on this property for which development could happen, and whether giving an applicant an approval here would set them up for failure. And while I appreciate that as a concept, I believe this property meets all of the same criteria that the, our Savior Lutheran Church property does. And while there is a bunch of this property that has environmental constraints that the property owner will have to work around, I do not see a difference between whether that small bit of land is used for a multifamily or a single-family in this instance. And so I will actually be voting nay to indicate support of this being an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Any other comments? Uh huh. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. Well, I have a little bit different comments. I, I still, in my reading of the current criteria, still believe that it does violate criteria four, which is the one about that the rezone is warranted because of changed circumstances. I, I do think it's important that we not allow for multifamily buildings when they aren't on a suitable parcel. And, and yes, Council President spoke to this, but we did have this discussion about, you know, a hypothetical situation where you're allowing a very large building on a very small encumbered parcel, and, and we specifically have a criteria that we, we assess against that. So I, I still don't think it meets criteria four, and this is a very, a parcel with a lot of environmental constraints on it. So yeah, I, I still think it doesn't meet criteria four, so I'll still be voting for this, and I still will be, I also have a pretty high bar for staff recommendations on something this complicated. They're planning, you know, planning professionals, they've, they know the zoning in and out, and they are the ones who made this recommendation based on the uses, you know, thinking through all the hypotheticals about all the possible uses under the current zoning and the, and the requested zoning, and I have a pretty high bar for, for disagreeing with that. So I will be voting yes.
Any other?
Sorry, I did have one, one additional thing, which is the criteria are very complicated, and they are part of Title 18, so they're going to be redone in the next version of Title 18. So I think that's one other thing, is if, if the criteria are complicated for other council members, and, you know, through this conversation, through the planning policy conversation, all of that, that, that can all be hopefully helpful for this next iteration of the criteria that are used in the Title 18 update, because it is complicated. But again, I still think it doesn't meet criteria four.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay. If there's no further discussion, the motion on the table has been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 2998, which denies changes to the Comprehensive Plan Use Designation Map and Zoning Map for parcel 3324069121, bracket Wildwood. All those in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
That passes five to one. Why am I, okay. So thank you very much. Complicated conversation, one of the more challenging things that councils face, but that is the end of our regular business for this evening. And the next item, welcome back, Councilmember Joe, is good as the order. So we have a couple of microphones up, so let's start with Councilmember Marts, and then Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the last regular council meeting, I sent out a tat, or sent out an email to the rest of you, that is the draft legislative priorities for the Sound Cities Association. My expectation is that the PEC will take action at this upcoming meeting to either recommend recommend adoption of that to the board or not, so I was going to ask if any of you had any feedback for me to share, as I, you know, just synthesize to, well, to get a sense of the body when I participated in the next PIC meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Joe, and, oh, sorry, Councilmember Hunt, for comments.
Thank you for sharing these with council. I think they're very aligned with our cities' goals as well, generally. One thing that stood out to me is in the discussion about the multimodal transportation support for cities, which is a big issue for Isqwa. It talks about support for Move Ahead Washington. One of the main driving factors behind Move Ahead Washington that I didn't see, I didn't see mentioned, was sustainability and emissions reduction, so I think that could be added in. It actually does have a sentence about supporting, I think, economic vitality and vitality, because those will come about from more multimodal transportation and transit, but it doesn't speak to emissions reduction, which is one of the driving reasons why Move Ahead Washington is so important.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you. I was also going to say, I read over it, I think, everything that is on there, I agree with. The only thing that, I think we did a very good job identifying as a council, is Washdott's maintenance of roadways, and I wonder whether that would be something that might also be something that other cities might want to help double down on that idea and include in the PIC and SCA commentary there. Thanks.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Joe and Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Martz, under the promote public safety item, we had talked about vehicular pursuits, and it says clarify circumstances which vehicular pursuits are permissible. Could you go a little bit in-depth on that? Are we saying that the state is going to set a standard, and then cities will have to adhere to that standard, or will we still have flexibility to choose our own policy within our own department and city?
I don't think that they went so far as to have an opinion on that particular issue. I think the general promote public safety items were crafted specifically around clarification, as opposed to moving the bar in any direction, which would have, which would have been, I think, somewhat controversial. And I think the hope was that by focusing on clarification, the word clarify is used in all of these items, not the blatant decision one, but generally, these were crafted to try to have the minimal amount of contention, but rather provide officers with clarification, which is one of the things that we've heard so much from them. But I don't think we got into the level of whether the legislation would be such that municipalities would not be able to supersede it. But I can certainly, you know, I'm going to take this feedback, and I think what I'm going to do is contact SCA staff and see how it compares with other things they're hearing, and seeing if there's opportunity to make revisions, and I could certainly, I think I'm hearing you saying that you would hope that it would not preclude municipal, municipalities having their own standards in this regard, and that if we had language clarifying that, you would appreciate that.
That's exactly correct. You're reading my mind. Thank you.
Councilmember DeMichele?
I just want to plus one Councilmember Walsh's comments, and also note that the Eastside Transportation Partnership, when we had our discussion on Friday, felt very strongly also about providing more funding for Washdott maintenance. So, I think it's certainly a position that we should be doubling down on. So, yeah, I just wanted to agree with Councilmember Walsh.
Deputy Counsel President?
Only other thing I might add, thinking about Move Ahead Washington, is this is this great transportation package of a lot of great projects, including ones that are important to us right here in Isqwa, but there's not really any timeline for when that funding will be dispersed or projects will start. I wonder if SCA might consider urging the legislature to begin those discussions around timing on projects, thinking of Highway 18 and us, East King County cities in particular, and like when that's going to get started. So, I wonder if that might be worth putting in.
Any other comments for Councilmember Martz? Not seeing any.
Can I just say, thank you so much. This was really thoughtful feedback. Like I said, I will present it to SCA staff, and if given the, if it winds up getting in the mix for the actual recommendation from PIC to the board, I will argue for these items. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Joe, you had a good of the order item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. SCA will be having their dinner on November 30th in Renton. If you'd like to attend, I'm signed up already through Juliana in the, Juliana in the mayor's office, so if you're interested in going, let me know, and we can carpool. Thank you.
That's great. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. I would very much like to give a, hopefully, a brief report, but there is so much to say about my attendance at the National League of Cities Convention. I want to start off by thanking the council for supporting the attendance, and thanks also to Juliana de Cruz for her support in planning my travel itinerary, which turned out to be really one of the smoothest trips I've ever taken. So, and then, at the very top, before I report on what happened, I'd like to say that I recommend that the city next year send two or three council members. It was really a valuable, worthwhile experience. I think it would be great to have two people there, so that the many excellent and timely sessions could be covered by two people. It was really difficult to choose between all of the good sessions that were being offered, so, and also it'd be kind of useful to have more than one person there to debrief at the end of each day, so, and it doesn't necessarily need to be me that goes next time, but I think it would be great to, over time, make sure that the whole council gets this opportunity. So, I'll be as brief as I can, because it was a terrific three days. I attended two sessions on affordable housing and rent protections that were really wonderful, and I'm going to be following up. There was a presentation from Marilyn Harris, the Director of the Louisville Metro Department of Housing and Director of Develop Louisville, who was just a dynamic speaker and had so many ideas about what we can do for renter protections, that we've talked about at this council, and they have an, actually, Affordable Housing Commission, and they developed a healthy renters' policy that their council adopted. They also have a Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which she created through very creative financing, which I, probably not applicable to here, to us here in Isqwa, but I thought it was, she must have been a very brave staff person to create it. And then, the other thing that they've done is what she called an Affordable Housing Overlay Project, which she said was a great help in reducing the number of NIMBY encounters that they had. So, she gave us her email. I've requested her PowerPoints, which I will share with everybody when they arrive, and I'm going to reach out to her to see if I can get more information about all of those and other things that they're doing. They have a terrific website that I've been exploring. So, other worthwhile sessions were one on rebuilding trust to government, with a really excellent panel discussion. I attended the federal legislation that's coming up for the 2023, excellent session, and then a session on how cities are supporting mental health services for both their residents and for city employees who are under a lot of pressure, just for the divisions and things that are going on in our communities. On the networking front, I attended two gatherings of women in municipal government, the Association of Washington Cities Reception, which was great fun, Democrats and Municipal Office Breakfast, which was great fun, and then four general sessions, and got to talk to people all over the United States, compared different forms of governance and what they were doing, with conversations mostly centered on affordable housing, seems to be the top issue everywhere. And then, finally, it was wonderful to be there when Victoria Woodard, who's the mayor of Tacoma, was installed as the new president of the National League of Cities. We are well representative, represented by Mayor Woodard, who gave an absolutely inspirational speech after she was installed. It was absolutely wonderful. I also got a chance to see the mayor of Kansas City, who's Quentin Lucas. He's the youngest mayor in Kansas City history. He gave a barn burner of a speech as well. Write that name down. That's going to be somebody who's going to be known outside of Kansas City, for sure. And so, anyway, wonderful experience. Thank you so much for supporting me, and I hope to bring a lot of the ideas that I gathered back to the council as appropriate. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Anything else for good of the order? Okay. Just a couple of upcoming meetings. November 29th at 6:30, the City Council will have a holiday dinner at the Big Fish Grill. December 5th is our regular City Council meeting, and the anticipated agenda items include the 2023 City Council Calendar, Tibbetts Valley Park Cell Tower Lease Agreement, King County Housing Authority Interlocal Agreement for Transit Oriented Development Project. And December 7th is a special City Council meeting at 8:00 AM at Tibbetts Creek Manor, and we will be meeting with Isqwa's Legislative Delegation to discuss the city's legislative priorities. So, the next item of business this evening would be an executive session, but we're not having one. So, there being no further business, we are adjourned at 8:42.